All right. Paul, Barbara, this is really, I mean, this is really exciting. So, well, this is the June 6th meeting of the Big Ben Community College Board of Trustees. Welcome, everybody, and also would like to make sure you know that this meeting is being recorded, so if you are speaking, please speak well. At this time, we will have the call, roll call, please.
Kathleen.
Here.
Kathleen.
Here.
My name is Richard.
Here.
Tom.
Here.
And Brad.
Yeah. Thank you. Next, our business is the pledge, please, but before we do that, I just want to mention that today is D-Day. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to watch some of the presentations on TV. It's amazing and certainly gives us pause to think about our country and especially our veterans who may have paid the ultimate price. And so I'd like just to take a short pause and just a moment of silence, lots of our prayers for veterans. Thank you. Please stand. Yes. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands my nation, a sovereign and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, we'll have introductions of new employees, please.
Let's see, I think Kathleen Duval, you have a smile on your face.
Yes, I do. Can I come up or can I just?
You're fine. You're fine.
Okay. I'd like to introduce Kristi Baggett. She's our new STEM Center Coordinator. We're very light and excited to have her. She started on Monday. Kristi, most recently, was teaching as an adjunct biology instructor from George Boston University in Oregon. She has, and before that, she was a research assistant with the Ecology Lab at Ohio State University, and that's where she received her master's degree from John Carroll University in Ohio, and her bachelor's degree, also a master's degree in biology and bachelor's degree in zoology from Oregon State in Corvallis. And she studied cell matters. And so we're just really glad to have her.
Would you like to tell us a little more about yourself, where you're from, what brought you to Big Ben?
Well, I grew up in Oregon, so that's why I went to my undergrad at Oregon State. That's something that, like I said, in Ohio, and I'm so happy to be back in the Northwest. Washington's a little bit new for me, but my parents, they got a job at Mitsubishi, so moved here and was so excited to find that there were community colleges sounding familiar in here, and it's a great position, so I'm really excited to be in there.
Well, we're excited to have you. Welcome, welcome, welcome. Any other new players?
Fabiola Arbosa has someone to introduce.
Fabiola, would you mind introducing yourself, because sometimes we have new introducers, if you will, we're not sure who they are, what their positions are, so if you wouldn't mind just introducing yourself also.
So I'm Fabiola Arbosa, and I do the transition studies.
Thank you.
And so it is my pleasure to introduce Jennifer Velazquez. She is our new program coordinator for our open doors program. Our open doors programs, for sure, we've been operating it, but we have grown and we have 115 students, and so we needed a full-time case manager, and now we are pleased to have Jennifer with us. She comes to us, she has experience in case management, working with students. She was working with the University of Washington on their jury project, and she also has earned her degree from Washington, from University of Washington in social.
Tell us a little bit about yourself, your family, where you're from.
So, my family and I are originally from California and moved up to Thelo in 2006, and that's where my family's been. I was in Seattle for school, and then I did some work there, but I am really passionate about working with students and really focusing on how I can, how I can support the inequities that happen in our education system.
Your passion comes through, and we appreciate you being here and talking.
I believe that's, oh.
I just wanted to introduce our new ASP president for next year.
Oh, good, that's right.
Rachel Harrison is here, and she's serving as our current Public Relations Officer. She's done a phenomenal job. She started out as our programmer in the fall and has just moved up to the ranks.
And she's an outstanding softball player, too.
You are, too.
Want to tell us a little more about yourself, where you're from, what your major is, perhaps?
I'm from Upper Washington, Ohio, New Jersey up there. I came here for wrestling originally, just trying to get my A.A.
And what position in softball?
Oh, that was the, that was the.
That was the faculty staff.
Oh, okay. Cool. And who am I? I don't know.
No.
They crushed us. I think it was 16 to 6, but we were missing our most valuable player. That was Dale Casebold, who keeps the score.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thanks very much. Welcome, all of you all. There are exciting things going on at Big Ben. At this time, consent agenda.
I hope you approve the consent agenda.
We approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Comment that didn't success, and there are a lot there, and I would like to have, you know, have a chance, some more presentation with regard to some of that information. We approve consent agenda as published. All of the players say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Thank you. Next, we'll have our ASP president, Cindy.
ASP has been keeping students busy with a lot of events since the last time we met with you guys. We sponsored a comedian, magician, a mentalist, someone presented on manage literacy, and someone spoke about alcohol parties and the law. We held a breakfast fest, annual art activity, DUI simulators made by Key Supreme Pillows, and a student versus staff faculty softball tournament. We had the family pool party, library campout, and today, the car smashing fundraiser, not to mention our weekly Monday morning treats across the campus. We tallied attendance totals and came up with over 2,000 students and staff participating in our events beginning of April. In the past, our annual attendance record for ASP sponsored events has been 4,800. Right now, we are over 5,500 in attendance. The campus clubs have been busy this quarter as well. Nursing club held a silent auction, as well as paid for their end collection, and their fundraising efforts. They have organized a Be the Match marrow donation. Metta held an ice cream social, and Martha D'Amico America from Tyler Wallace, as well as sponsoring a softball tournament. Engineering club had a rocket launching event, and I think that is constantly the cry back next week.
Questions or comments? Thank you for your report. Sounds like you've been very busy. Next, last one.
On my consent agenda, the only thing that I would really like to add is that I'm really excited to be back as the chair of the start committee, and we are going through a reboot. We have all been extremely busy, and so we're going to be preparing to be working on this during the summer, and we have some new things we wanted to implement this fall quarter. Thank you very much.
Questions? Thank you. Excellent. So I'm not here, so we'll move on to Linda Skudmaker.
So just a couple of things to add to my update. We are, one of five colleges permitted to submit a capital project in December of this year to get in the pipeline, because there's only five colleges that are in the pipeline. So, I suppose we're nice enough to vote to allow the five that were not in an opportunity to get in. We'll start our work one, trying to figure out what we might be thinking about doing in July.
And we still have to score 70 or higher on the evaluation, or?
Any initial thoughts, what you might consider?
So the only thing that has come to mind lately has been Wallenstein.
Something like a student center, and I know there's been a discussion about that in the past, it doesn't?
Student center would have to be self-paid, so not capital.
And we're thinking Wallenstein because of its condition, but also because of its role in the community for supporting performing arts. And if we are to be a comprehensive community college, then we should have that as a part of our service places versus renovation.
No, that would be renovation. We don't have anything left that's worth.
Renovation could include some expansion, though, perhaps?
Potentially. There was, there was something for Wallenstein back in, like, 2006 that included expansion, and then somehow the project morphed into crime arts.
Thank you.
So Linda, one question for you on the within the consent agenda, the facilities master plan, what is the mini-update that I keep seeing around?
Mini-update is because I want to do it without having to pay somebody to grant to type it up for us, so I wanted to take the PUD version and mark it up and then just make these changes and hopefully be by the end of the month.
Okay. When is the?
And we have to have that completed by the same time we submit in December.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The other thing that I forgot to put on here was the state auditorium's office. I heard from them last week while I was at the office, and so we are trying to coordinate timing for some kind of later this fall. The fire road access repair ran into a little difficulty when they ripped up the asphalt and not let it start.
Well, when you rip up things, lo and behold, there was water underneath.
You find things.
Yay, for us. They went down almost two feet and didn't, they initially thought there was actually a pipe that was running underneath the parking lots, which would not have been very smart if that was the case.
Which parking lot are you talking about?
The gym, so 2,000, where you guys came in, probably saw some contractors and stuff. It was really fun to watch, because the contractors were, like, literally surfing on the, it was that bubbly, which was very frightening the first day, and all I could see was cha-ching, 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 cha-ching. But when we dug deep enough, it wasn't a pipe that was causing the issue. We believe the section between the upper and lower parking lots over there in the gym, where there's rock now, used to have lawn there, and there used to be a pipe that watered that lawn. Well, that pipe never got capped, so every time we run the sprinklers, there was water going underneath. So 30 years we've been paying for a little extra water to water the dirt underneath the parking lot. So needless to say, that's been capped. We are going to have to pay a little bit more, because they're going to take a little, take a chunk out and add more gravel so that the compression test passed, then, well,
at least we didn't end up with a Florida-style sinkhole when we worked doing it.
Since this campus is all air-based, there's lots of figures.
And that's all I had.
How's the, I'm sure you're on double duty right now, right?
Yes.
So how is that position coming? Two jobs in one body.
Oh, well, so my hair is getting grayer, come on. So I will mention a couple of things about that. One is, so we do have someone else in the business office that has also stepped up. So we've had someone that's taking over some of the things that I did. So she's not necessarily doing the whole, definitely. The second thing is, is this is a great mentoring opportunity for her to broaden her wings on top of completing Wila and her master's degree, so that someday she can be a senior student, somewhere in the system. Maybe here, maybe not.
Would you like to have a remodel turn?
So that is often, we do have, we actually, back men earlier this weekend, we actually took a poll to see how many people had come up to the ranks, and there were eight of us still in the, still in the room that had come up from the director position. And we talked about the things that we were doing so that we could continue that. And one of the pieces is finance gets buried in finance, and so that's all you do. So I've tried, since I've been here, to make sure she gets included in the capital. So she, day one, she's been involved in the building. So I think she's going to hang out and finish out the building concern.
It's all because of the blueprints, are you mean? With my color correct.
And the next capital project.
And she loves starting the game.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you. Next is Dr. Humphries.
I don't have any additional comments beyond what was in the material, it was in the consent agenda. I know there's a lot of material there, so I want to see if they got any questions about, about the, in the consent.
Just that I agree with John with regard to the student survey results, that maybe we could bring that back in a less intensive agenda to dive into that a little.
And one comment I would make about the survey is that is a good example of our planning process working. Last year, in the last academic year, there was discussion about student feedback and some concerns that came up from staff and faculty in our planning meetings about, we do a spring survey, and the feedback was, well, we're looking at student persistence, retention. If you're surveying students in the spring, those are the folks who made it from fall, winter, spring. So, so what do we know, what can we learn if we were doing a survey of students in the fall, soon after they can't come here and not after they've been here for a couple of quarters? And so it was in response to those conversations that institutional research worked on putting together this survey and implementing it in the fall. So it's good things from surveys. Again, it's a good example of how we, how's the feedback came up throughout the process. Thank you.
Next, Tim Gerzer.
A couple of things. So we, pardon me. So we have hired quite a few people in the last, since the last time that we were together. We have a couple more that have gone out to offer, so we're waiting for responses back on our librarian position and the alumni coordinator for the foundation. We completed the search process for Director Health Education and the ed program coordinator, so those memos will go to the president probably next week for decisions. Octaviano Gutierrez, who's been teaching part-time for us for, I think, 11 years, was selected as the interim English instructor, replacing Steve Coles. We're very excited about that. And the other thing that I think it's important just to kind of free you all to keep awareness of is that we're in the process of implementing a number of salary changes for our civil service employees. So within the governor's budget was a large sum of money for IT reclassification. So we're working on those notification letters and getting those out, as well as impacts to about 17 other job classifications on campus that we're trying to sort out and get those done before July 1st. I wanted to let you know that, so CED, which is the Committee for Equity, Inclusion, and Diversity, and then the members of the Employee Experience Work Group, they've been working over this last year to come up with definitions for the terms diversity, equity, and inclusion. That's one of the lenses that we selected a number of years ago when we were putting together our strategic plan. And so they worked really hard to pull those together and developed a set of recommended definitions. Those were approved by shared governance council on May 10th, so congratulations to them, because there were some very productive, though challenging, conversations that were had throughout that process. And so I think everybody has a new awareness of, you know, what, what those definitions mean and how they can help us move forward to serve students and employees. And one of the things that we are going to be doing over the summer is taking those definitions that we've approved and including them in a proposed board policy for you all to consider with regard to diversity, equity, and inclusion here on campus. And we think that that will fit nicely with your end statement, and then also provide the trustees with a lens to use when assessing the college's success or improvement. Any questions? And everybody, show up tomorrow at 1:00 is our annual employee celebration event. So if you have any clothes from the 80s in your closet, then now would be a good time to trot those out. And, I know, I didn't want to say that, but, you know, hey, if you weren't, if you guys were not worried, call your mom, call your dad, and see what they might have for you tomorrow. And we'd love to have you come. There's going to be some really great desserts and ice cream sundaes and a few games, and I think, I think it'll be good, we'll be recognizing a number of folks, and so we'd love to have you join us.
Is Van Hyder?
She is not, and I have her report. So to date, the foundation has been able to secure pledges in the amount of $2,340,875, or approximately 62.4% of goal. And we've done that, we've made 121 asks, we've had 58 pledges, 32 declined to participate at this time. We're still waiting to hear back from other potential donors, and we've been submitting some grant applications, waiting to hear back from Chase Bank, US Bank, and of course, we have other people and businesses to talk to. And got a big one coming up next week, hopefully, next Tuesday, 11th. Yeah. So we're feeling good about that, and let's see, we've awarded scholarships for the 2019-2020 academic year. There are a few exceptions that'll be awarded later. To date, the total scholarship amount has been $173,183. That does not include the Weinstein $10,000, it doesn't include the Nelson $6,000, it doesn't include Microsoft $60,000, the Leah Lane $11,000, the Tracy $1,000, Flock $2,000, Bella $10,000, and Promoting Positive Change 500. There's more scholarships to be awarded in August. And so anyhow, we're thinking, projecting that for the 2019-2020 academic year will probably be making scholarship awards in excess of 273,000. So feeling really good about that. Celebration went very well. I think everybody was there, except one, yeah. Yeah. But you had important stuff to do. And it was a great time. We have preliminary numbers right now. We know the growth was in excess of 121,000, which is down from the previous year, but we anticipated that because of the competition from other organizations in the community and then from ourselves, because we are trying to raise money for the capital project. And so that concludes Leanne's report.
I have a question.
Sure.
So I saw some press refer to the WAC on Microsoft. Does the number that you gave us that's been committed include that number?
It does not. It does not.
It doesn't include 400,000?
It does not. Okay. So hopefully, we'll be able to receive that Microsoft money, which is, Microsoft made adjustments to conserve energy, and so they got a rebate of like $480,000. And they told me for a variety of bureaucratic reasons, they didn't want the money, they wanted PUD to give it to other entities. And so 80,000 went to split a bunch among a bunch, and then 400,000 is supposed to come to workforce education building. And then we'll also be, that same day, we'll be making an ask of the PUD itself, giving them the opportunity to invest in the building and workforce development.
Any other questions? Next is mission fulfillment monitor.
All right, so Leanne is not here. I'm sorry, Leanne is not here, but Valerie isn't here either. And so you do have a copy of the mission fulfillment report, and we have Edgar Zamora, who works with Valerie and, you know, did a lot of the work that made this report possible as far as the data. And so if there are any questions about that, he's here to answer those. And then Bryce Humphries is available to talk about the report and how it fits in with our overall planning process. So are there any, anything you want to say at this time, or, or just respond to questions?
There are, I have a few things I'd like to share, but I guess I'd see if there's questions first, and then would you share with us?
Okay.
So I just wanted to point out a couple of things about the report and, and a couple of features in the report. So first off, if you will see on page 61 of the PDF, it says BCC planning timeline, on the, so if you look on the white page, it says 44, and up above it says 67, so, or 60, sorry.
I think it'll be 44 on there.
So the, that table there is showing, we have these different strands of things we're intertwining together in our planning process. We have institutional self-evaluation, and you can see the steps we've been taking since January till now that result in the mission fulfillment report you had before you. So, and here's where we're looking at the data, and ugly, and what do we need to do about that, and then come up with a mission score. You see the budget process where in combination with this departments submitting our budgets, and we want this information to help inform budget decisions, and we have a separate action item with improving the budget for the next year. And then, just looking at our planning process overall, we are soliciting feedback from employees during this process of, again, the good, the bad, and the ugly about our planning process and, and how we keep improving that. And so some of the data indicators that we use this year, we have, we're not going to use next year, we've added a couple, so we keep, I mean, done that. use next year, we've added a couple, so we keep, I mean, done that over the past couple years, trying to continue to refine that process. So that, that table lays out those three elements, how they, hopefully you can see the relationship and the timing on those. After that, you see multiple pages, this is mission fulfillment, campus feedback summary. And so this is a summary of the feedback that came from employees on the winter in-service date, the first of February. And so again, this is a summary of their feedback, which then informed decisions about how to move forward. And then after that, you see another little page, it shows annual next steps. And at the end of the year, we had a meeting with some of the committees that are doing some of the work around this, and had some really good great feedback about how we improve the process, not so that, that trying to figure out how to present this information in a way that could be hopefully useful to the board, but also to, to that internal audience, the faculty and staff that we're used for. And so you'll see there it has our end statements, core themes, objectives, priorities. And then you see comes his next steps for 2018-19. So this is what last year we said we wanted to focus on. Then you see the next column, actions taken, this is summary of what was accomplished this year. Then the mission fulfillment score, how we scored ourselves, evaluated our work. And then the next steps for 1920, what we want to work on next year. So again, trying to show that continuity there. Again, I said we had a, there's a meeting with folks around a variety of committees. Can't mention the Employee Experience Work Group, that's one of the groups that, that based on this feedback, has a scope of work that they're doing. And we have some other groups as well, working on things related to high school relations or evening, or evening scheduled programming or advising work. And it was, we had a great discussion about the process itself. We've had two of these big in-services in February where people are looking at data and trying to see how that informs decisions. They've gone through it twice now. And so they were able to see where things should be connecting and where things are not connecting and had some great feedback about how we can improve that process next year. And so our intent, our hope is that we keep improving that this next year. And then the year following, we'll have an accreditation visit in the fall, and then we'll have our big annual planning in-service just a few months later in February. But hopefully then, the intent is that we would have been refining this a bit more so that when, at that point, two years, well, two years from now, we're going to be looking at our mission, our core themes and statements, how we're going to do our planning process, trying to simplify this, as we've talked about before. And, and my hope is that we can continue to build on this work that we're doing, incorporate the feedback that faculty and staff are giving, so that we really have a good foundation two years from now that will make that process easier for us.
So specific to that annual next steps, something I'd like to see in this matrix, where you have the column 2019 score. So can we carry those out so that we can see the trending? So the next time we look at this matrix, we see 2019 and then 2020, so that we have the ability to visualize whether we're going up or down?
Yes, yes, so two comments on that. And absolutely, in fact, we, we're playing with a spreadsheet that does just that, where we've gone back to each year in our accreditation cycle, or this current accreditation cycle, put all that into one document, so we can do just that. We've adjusted our process and scale a bit. And so, but still, that's, that's something we're working on, we'll be happy to, to share that. The second thing that I think one of the most valuable things that came out of this discussion was there's a lot of discussion about, well, what does that score really mean for us? And how do we arrive at that? And is it just a shot in the dark, you know, you're throwing a dart at the dark border, or is it based on something that's meaningful? And, and so some of the feedback was about how we can organize the work of these groups in a way that that, that number is, would be more meaningful than it is today. So because it's, it's very subjective in, in how we arrive at that. And so, it's subjective, and so I had to take that into consideration. But yes, so we, yeah, we can show you that longitudinal data, and then we're trying to make this a more objective process, so that there's more.
So a question for you on taking this and making it actionable. Can you give me an example of where we've taken this data that we've received here and changed the way we're operating as a result of it? So for instance, if staff is telling us they need more resources associated with training, are we budgeting more in the coming budget cycle for staff development and training that we were previously? Yeah, we use the data that way.
We do, we use it also when applying for grants and building in to the grant, some of the information that we get out of this process relative to the needs and, you know, using those grant resources to leverage.
So that's a specific example. So are we budgeting more next year for staff training and development?
I don't, we're not.
So we have requests on the table for further permanent to do that. We also have requests on the table for one-time funding. So we're more comfortable using the one-time funding at this time, which means we're not actually putting it in the permanent budget. It'll just be done out of salary savings. For instance, the director position, that's at D R, so that we can do that, until we have a little more stabilization for our state FTEs, our tuition collections aren't where they should be.
The, the other thing, if you go back to page 44, on the planning timeline for May, it says the president makes funding decisions. The only funding decisions that were made were relative to one-time requests, because Lynda didn't actually, you know, the legislature acted and they did it within the timeframe, but then the governor didn't act immediately. So then, once the governor signed everything, then it had to go through the state board office, and Lynda got notification of our allocation Monday of this week. So we just haven't been able to make those kind of decisions because we haven't been given the information that we needed.
So to follow up on Thomas's question, so the last column is resource allocation today. Is there an opportunity to have proposed future resource allocations identified? Kind of show, based on what, what all this data tells us, this is what we think we're going to have to go do to be able to afford to achieve the next step?
Sorry, so part of...
I have a comment.
Yeah, I guess I wonder how limiting that would be, though. I mean, as long as these considerations are being made in budget planning at the admin level, that's within our province.
Right. But it's also in my progress to still ask the question, I mean, is there, are you identifying, okay, so the report says?
So the report says this. So we, we just had this big conversation yesterday, I said, so, so we know there are things out there that we need to be doing in order to steer the ship going in the right direction. So are there things that we're currently doing that maybe we should do less of? And so we need to go line by line, not just me, but we need to go through there and say, okay, so we've been doing this for 12 years, is it working, is it not working?
So I guess, would you see assigning a value or a specific number off this spreadsheet to be beneficial for the budget allocation process?
Right. And I wasn't asking about a specific number, but when you look at the resource allocation today, it talks about some specific actions and activities and grant pursuits and some changes, our time faculty funds for evening classes. So, but there are other things, I'm assuming, that could be done that haven't had a resource allocation or there hasn't been a reallocation for.
And, and yes, we are using these data to identify those needs and then use those in our planning purposes. We're either budgeting from our own resources or much of the budgeting that we do for grant applications ties in with these needs, and we try to, we're relevant, trying to match those.
Other comments on that? Just one other thing I want to point out in this. So if you scroll down beyond the next steps portion, then we come to the final portion, which is the dashboard indicators for the next year. And you can see in the strike through items that we're not continuing with, and items in red that we are continuing with. Or, excuse me, the items in red are new things that we're adding, excuse me. So, so the, and that point about the ones that are with a strike through, they're, they're being dropped for one of two reasons. One, feedback from employees during in-service was that they didn't find that the data particularly helpful. And second, there are some items that were one-time pieces of data. So for example, we had 1.1D right at the top, this is foundation supporter feedback. So the foundation is there preparing for the fundraising, and they did a survey with some employers. So we have a lot of feedback there that we've put in here, but the foundation's not going back out and doing that again. So it's just one-time piece of data that we can use. One of the things that we're talking about, and we have discussed how to improve our processes, is it will help us in refining some of these indicators, is changing how we're doing our in-service of these, or there's more, there's closer connection between these data elements and some of the actions that you saw on the previous table about the next steps. So again, that will help us refine some of those indicators, what's useful and what's not, so that, again, you have a good foundation to build on as we're going into our next foray of trying to develop this.
One of the conversations we've had about data and dashboards is understanding that there are multiple audiences for this information. There may be dashboard data that we want to share with the public. If somebody's considering sending their child, or if they're considering coming to Big Bend, they want to know certain information about the college and performance of programs and things of that nature. Then we have our trustees. You're a special audience as the governing board, and you may have a need for information that is relevant to your role of representing constituents in the service district. But it may not be information that necessarily the public is interested in, or maybe it is, and so there'd be overlap. It may not be of interest to help employees, faculty and staff, make decisions to help with the operations of the college. And of course, that's another large part of these data is meeting the information needs of the employees. And so there's going to be continued conversation with the board about what is it you need to know to fulfill your role appropriately.
I didn't have anything else regarding, is there any other questions for me regarding the report, what it contains, how we put it together?
Is this a good time to have Edgar show some dashboards? Think, think Edgar's. So we've been, Edgar's been getting training in Tableau, as has Valerie. She just hasn't been able to get use for training, but he has. And so he's starting to set up some dashboards that I think you'll find very, very helpful. And you will have, because you have Big Bend email addresses, you'll have access to all this information on the portal. So Edgar, take it away.
All right. So the dashboard I'm going to show you guys is the plan to replace this one, to make it more interactive. Some people do enjoy static displays like this. So the plan is to move this down here in order to kind of go to the more dynamic route, just still be able to access them if you want that. But if you go out to the portal, this is available, anybody can sign into the portal. And on the left side, you can scroll down to institutional research. And up here, when you first open it, you'll see two, there's two out there. I don't know if the board is concerned about this, of course, success rates or not, but it's out there if you want it. But the one that we're going to be looking at is the quick facts one. Like I said earlier, this is going to be replacing the other one. And so when you open it up first, there's a kind of tool, if you're, if you've never been in Tableau, it's something that you might need to read. And so there's, there's tool of navigating, apply filter, resetting filters, there's summary data, and then there's a use of the map. And so if you ever get lost, just come back here and you should find instructions on how to do that. So the quick facts one is going to be, first of all, you have, it's dynamic, and so you have student intent broken down. And so over the years, you're going to see that's change, because some have been phased out, some have been merged together. And then you have students' variation ethnicity, and then you have age ranges of students, and that is based on a range, and so goes from 15 to 19.9. And so here, also again, then you have your account. And so Tableau, the nice thing about Tableau, it's very dynamic, and so every aspect of this is, is interactable, so you can interact. So if you want to look at workforce students, if that's what you're concerned about, you can hover over intent, it'll tell you that there are 24% in this academic year, 24% of students supported, identified as workforce students, and that equates to about 929. And so you can actually click on it, and what it will do is that the rest of the data will begin to shift based on that filter. So it's dynamic in that nature, in that you can see, well, you have, currently has select to just workforce students, and then you have the breakdown of what the demographics of the workforce students look like, and then you also have their age as well. And so you can unclick that, and it takes you back to the normal view. And you can do the same thing with race and ethnicity. So if you want to look at, since we're a Hispanic or Native institution, if you're concerned about that, then you can click on that as well, and then it'll filter down. And then you can see where they're mostly, what their intent code is, and then you can combine a lot of these. And so if you want to look at, I want to look at Hispanic students, or academic students, who's intent are academic, and you can do so, and then you have that, and you have your numbers here. And then on top of that, you also have these filters down here. And so currently, we have it to 2016, 2017 academic year, and you go all the way down to 2017. So you can click that, and again, it can dynamically change to whatever you currently have selected. You can also look into enrollment status, you can look at intent, you can look at kind of student, and then also sex. And so the, the interesting thing, the thing about intent is that clicking workforce and then clicking intent here is doing the same thing. So what you do, if you do that, then it's exactly the same thing. So if you want to look at workforce students who are workforce training, who are male, then you can do so. And then down here, you have the reset button, and so instead of I'm clicking it and clicking them, you can just reset it, and it'll take you back to the top where you were. And then on top of that, we also have this issue, not this issue, but we have this discussion of where our, where do our students come from? Are they within the district or the outside of the district?
Just a question back on the previous slide, can you do longitudinal information and also, for example, how many are workforce students? and also, for example, how many are workforce students through the year span or?
Not necessarily. That would require a little bit more, kind of putting them all together, but what you can do is any, click workforce and then check that year and then kind of compile the numbers yourself. But there's no, that would require a little bit more of different kind of data. So, on the map, this will come up here as nice, so you can look it up on your computer, you can, there's actual gray background and stuff like that. And so, what you have here is that you can zoom in and out. Again, it's being interactive, you can get as close as you want. So, you have it broken down currently by county. And so, this home over here will bring you back to the home. And so, what it's doing, when you click that home, it's getting every single point. And so, I remember in one specific, specific year, I think it was 2009, we have two students in the wall. And so, again, it's going to try to get every single point when you click that home button. So, if you don't have those students in, it's going to zoom in a little closer. So, just remember that. If you get in, and you're lost all the way out here, in the middle of nowhere, and you're like, well, I don't know how to get back, you can just click the home button, and it'll take you back. And so, again, with it being interactive, if you're only concerned about in districts, and you click that, and that will show you your in district students. And again, you have academic year, you have kind of student, dual enrollment, race and ethnicity, and then if you're concerned about specific cities as well, you can say, and then you can just look at a bill. And then if you're also, drill down as you want. And then if you hover over these points, it also breaks it down by race and ethnicity if you're concerned about that. I know Dr. Lisa was talking about running start students, and so you can see where do our running starts students come from and what is that racial breakdown if you're concerned about. Are there any questions on that?
Nice to be able to have that data visualized, sliced and diced in different ways.
Yes. And so, that, as Edgar mentioned, in looking at the data, it was very quick and easy for me to look at dual enrollment programs, participation by race, ethnicity, and to see that even though we're about a 57, 43 distribution of, you know, white, Asian, historically underrepresented groups in our service district, the participation rate's about two to one. So, there's a huge disparity there, and that gives me data that I can take then when I meet with school superintendents and say, how can we work together to close that gap and provide that opportunity for these families that could certainly use it if they're low income?
Yeah, specifically, we can look at that. So, you can go here and you can look at how they start, I said, academic year, and you can see that there, you can see that it's about almost double. And then the filters you carried over for the map to the overall, and so you can then go here and say, well, what about Moses Lake? It's almost triple. And then you can go, well, why does Lethello have majority Hispanic are going there but not? And then Moses Lake when it's closer? So, you can begin to ask yourself these questions and say, well, what can we do about that if we want to deal with that equity? You can see the same thing with Afra and Sub Lake. You can see, you can begin to ask all these other questions.
And so, it leads to things like, you know, some of the characteristics of not being affluent is maybe you don't have transportation, and so these other outlined communities are participating because the white students have the affluence, they have the cars to do that. And so, then that led to a conversation I had this morning with the interim head of Grand County Transit and asking about, can we talk about ways that we can, you know, help these students in these outlined areas? So, I'll be setting up a meeting with my team and we'll talk about that. Also going to talk about wrapping buses to promote the college.
Music wrapping.
So, anyhow, it's, it's a great way to show how information can be used to help us make more informed decisions and also get us to question, why is it this way? Why are we doing it this way? Why aren't we getting better results? All those kinds of questions that Edgar mentioned.
This is an incredibly effective tool we use in my regular work when we're looking at community demographics. And so, based on some of the things that you were showing with the running start, the other piece is looking comparatively at the individual community's demographics and seeing if our enrollments are trending in line with community demographics or if there's a large skew. Because I think that plays out, you saw that in the Lethello running start number.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a good way for us to see market penetration.
And if you come across any issues, you can email me or Valerie.
Thank you, Edgar.
So, you developed this all by yourself?
No, not really. I had the house of Valerie. The hardest part is getting the data in the form that you want, the form that's Tableau where we did, that I'm shooting for.
Very impressive. Any other questions? At this time, it is an action item, so we need to, I guess, what was the wording? We need to do a, a, a mission fulfillment monitoring report?
That is our recommendation that you approve the 2018-19 Mission Fulfillment Monitoring Report.
Second, segment that we approved the Mission Fulfillment Monitoring Report. Is there any further discussion? Puzzles in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Right at Mr. Strategic Plan.
Yes, the strategic plan begins on page 149 of your packet. So, with the strategic plan, it's made up of a variety of plans, and you have to understand that we are in a transition from what we were doing to what we're going to be doing. And so, it may seem a little messy to you now, but I think when we get ready to go into our next eight-year accreditation cycle, that eight-year strategic plan is going to be much better in terms of its composition and organization. But what you have in this packet is the academic master plan, which is basically curriculum, instructional, and the communications and marketing plan. Those are two elements of a strategic plan. And if you look on page 150 at the introduction, there's also a facilities master plan and also a technology plan that's going to be developed. So, we're in the process of moving toward 2020 at the end of our accreditation cycle, which we'll have our visit in the fall. And then the commission would get the report and they would act on that in January. And then February, we would get the report of their action, and then that starts the new eight-year cycle. And so, at that point, hopefully, we can work out some of the details, bugs, if you will, and be in position to have a much more integrated plan than what you see now. It seems a little choppy right now. And, but that's because we're going from little silo plans and, and from the earlier approach that we considered our academic master plan as our strategic plan. It, it pretty much drives everything in a strategic plan for a college or university, but it's not comprehensive enough in and of itself. What, what it does is it'll drive facilities, it'll drive communications, marketing, it'll drive technology. So, you have to have those elements working together to have a viable strategic plan. I hope that makes sense. So, with that, Bryce, was there anything you wanted to explain or?
I guess the checking of the link, okay. One thing I wanted to point out on the website is, you go to Big Bend website, then we have the plans up there. So, you go under Information Center, Resource Strategic Planning, then you can see a link to the strategic plan, to the academic master plan, facilities master plan, communications marketing. So, they're there all together, bring them to access. But I don't know if anyone has any other questions about the content of any of those documents that are in the packet today.
The communications and marketing plan begins on page 161.
I don't mean reading it just without any context or explanation, it was helpful the way it's laid out, even the complexity of removing parts and pieces in any work transition. So, for me, it made sense, the piece in it. So, the communications and marketing, and we have done that in the past, and that's a, obviously, that's an important one, just from a strategic standpoint, a lot of the things we want accomplished. I feel like this is good progress. I do think it's worth considering as we continue to evolve, weaving in our internal communications and marketing as well, and aligning everything. So, we're communicating internally and externally, there's just consistency. I think this is a great improvement from what was on the website.
And Matt Kilibrus is also here, if you have any questions specific to that communication marketing plan.
Further questions or comments?
One thing I'd, I'd like to say is that, in my experience, working at multiple colleges in different states, this, this plan really does a much better job of connecting the dots for the reader, whether they're internal or external. And I've not seen that kind of effort or that product before, and it's, it's to the credit of Bryce and the faculty and staff who have worked so hard on this. It's taken many, many people working in the background, many, many hours to produce this product. And I think it's only going to get better as we go through this process. I'm really feeling very excited about what kind of product we'll have to work on in 2020 after we get the accreditation, start that second accreditation cycle or subsequent cycle. Any thoughts? Any kudos that we need to acknowledge? I mean, it's been deans, faculty, division chairs, I mean, the list goes on, there's committees, as you mentioned earlier, very inclusive. And, and that's, in my experience, that's not always that way. I, I can remember one college I was at, basically, it was one person sat and wrote the accreditation report, the strategic planning and everything for the college. So, what we're doing here is, I'm really looking forward to having the accreditors come and visit because I think they're going to be.
I guess one other connection to the point now is if you were to scroll back and look at the next step, documents, marketing, outreach marketing was something that came up last year, and so, we, and so you see a reference to that, and then there was a desire to create an outreach marketing plan prior to UDS or something. So, you can see then, again, something that came up, we had a work group of, of people. You can't want to, I do want to give a shout out to Matt and to Dean and our workforce faculty, especially, a lot of concerns about marketing of our workforce programs, and a lot to solicit their input this, in this process, so their voice was heard and putting this together. It has great feedbacks. So, again, you can see that planning process is basically.
To Dean, did you have anything to add? Any other questions?
I think a lot of that information has been able to help our deans when applying for grants from the state or other sources. Again, it helps to have this, to show that we're, we know what we're doing, we know what we want to do, we know how we want to accomplish it, we just need support to give us resources.
Again, this is an action item, and the recommendation is to adopt the strategic plan.
Well, is it an action item? It's information.
On my, I said, as, information, I could be wrong.
Oh, it is marked as information on page 149. It's shown as action on, on the agenda, and I.
Strategic plan looks like information.
Oh, okay, we're looking at six and seven. Yeah, it's information. Oh, you got the old one, so, never mind.
Sorry. Okay. Moving on then, next item is 2019-20 operating budget, budget vice president.
Where the money is and where the money isn't. Maybe at the bottom. So, our total operating budget is built by, by taking last year's budget and rolling it up and increasing anybody's steps, anybody's increments, and then we go in and we add any colas, which now in some cases are termed differently and are called general wage increases. So, our bargaining convention for the general wage increase, so that ended up in the government's budgets. So, you'll see that there is a difference of 1.2 billion from last year, and it wasn't because we decided that we just wanted to spend a ton of money. Some of that has, some of those monies have particular parameters around them, and we have not gotten the specific details on how we are allowed to spend those monies. So, while they're in the budget, we can't spend them until they tell us how we can spend them. And so, there's a chunk in here for nursing educator salaries. We're waiting for a few more details on what, what all is considered a nurse educator? Is it a nurse that teaches? Is it anyone who teaches a nurse? Those are asked by the chief of class. So, those, those questions have come up, and so we asked for some clarification, both through the AG's office and through legislative staff. through the AG's office and through legislative staff, the state board is doing that. We also had another piece that was, that we haven't had before, that was 100,000 for guided pathways. Are you laughing?
No.
Okay.
It's Michael Zabinski, he's.
Oh, okay. Okay, he's entertaining.
He is, he, he feels, I saw him at lunch today, and he feels that, you know, this is a tense time with finals next week, and, and so he thinks some levity and mirth is in order for the college. And it's true, you can walk through a building and look at the smiles and know that Michael had come through there in his costume.
During budget.
Sorry. So we do have a second page that talks a little bit more about what the differences are and where they've come from. Everything here is pretty explanatory. I did have a couple of other things I wanted to point out. So the enrollments, where it says aerospace, the 10,398, we actually had that last year. It was the piece left over from our portion of the 1,000 aerospace FTEs. Only we didn't know that we still had that 10,000 after I just came to the table. So that's why it shows. The dictionary mine includes 100,000 for the guided pathways, even though there's no definition perhaps that it's, it's in here. A worker training slight difference, ongoing targeted, has to do with students of color, accommodations, foundational support. There's a piece in there for when they cut back on our tuition, and it was to backfill the tuition that piece. It's, we have more included competitive, but it's still earmarked out there. Down below, it's others' revenue, non-state, tuition remains at 4 million. So far this year, we have not seen 4 million to be passed. We are really close at 3.99. So even with the tuition increase from 17, 18 to 18, 19, we didn't see an increase in our tuition, just a little bit of a decrease because our state FTE is still lagging behind and not increasing. However, our running start has increased. And where we thought, excuse me, last year that we would be actually collecting an extra 100,000 on our start this year. So next year, we're thinking that we'll pick up another, that it'll be 150. Part of that is due to the change in the amount that we get reimbursed. We get 93%. It's getting 7% as an admin fee. What's it, it's right down here, it's about $400 to win up for FTE. So the difference in the 1.25 is we, with our three federal grants that we still have, we have a little bit more of grant absorption, where we pick up a portion of salaries and benefits for folks. Then we have overall salary and benefits that increase for all of our full-time employees. We have a small amount for our salary and benefit increase for our part-time faculty. The specific earmarks and provisions that I've talked about, the 100,000 for guided pathways, the 231,000 for nursing educators, reclassification, through OFM, part of that was IT, and part of that was just within the classified structure. Then we have our increases to our entities that are involved with them. And then one of the, I heard, the one for '06, at the top of the graph where it has the bars of the salary spend, it's supplies, it looks like supplies going up 100 grand, that's because that's where we parked the revenue out there.
That's on page 18.
Yeah.
Six O student service.
So we did, so that it shows that it's in the budget, but there's a detail. I guess one question is, I've noticed the equipment has gone down substantially. That doesn't think it's a hole or staying right there for now? We didn't cut anything. So people would just say, okay, so when I got here, so this was travel and equipment, and it was based on just how they spent there. So if I had 30 grand, it was spread between those three categories, depending on how I spent it. So if I got all spent on equipment, then the following year it showed up in equipment, even though maybe I wasn't planning on buying any. So we just moved it between, so we just.
So is this an action item, or is it continuing?
This, this is an action item. We recommend that you approve this budget as presented.
For both? If you approve the budget as presented, any further questions? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed? We'll jump back, and it's law is here now, asking if you would make this report.
Good afternoon, members of the board. I have a lot to say, as it happens, so that's good. One thing that I really wanted to mention first is the science fair. I understand what you're trying to pretend, and thank you, German Lane. But anyway, yesterday, we had our science fair here at Big Ben, it was right over here in Massa, and this was spearheaded by Lindsay Gross, who's a statistic student. And what they did was, and the final quarter of Lindsay's year-long cohort, she had her students choose a subject area of their own interest, and design, conduct, and analyze their own experiments, and answer a question of their own creation. And they made posters of the research, shared it publicly with the community and the science fair. And I got to see it, I got to catch a glimpse of it, and I was really amazed by the artwork that Lindsay Taylor did, I was tremendously proud of them. They worked extremely hard, and you could tell it in the quality of the work. And I'm also extremely proud of our students, they worked very, very hard. I happen to share a number of common students with both those colleagues, and they really cared about what they were doing, they were invested, and they really wanted to do their best, and they were actually very, very passionate about the things they chose. And, yeah, I just feel enormous pride in my colleagues and students, so it was amazing.
If I may make a comment, I did, was able to come out, walk around, and talk to a representative Tyler, and he said the really neat thing about it, sometimes on a test or an end of course evaluation, you don't really get how much they're invested in, and how much they care about, how much they know about it, but walking around and talking to students as they were presenting there and to the public, he said it really hit, really inspired.
And I have to admit, I mean, these students this year that we've had, it just blung me away. I actually, just yesterday, I had a student who did some investigations, got on curriculum with my calculus three class, and shared me a primary source, and asked me to help them through it. And I was reading it, and I was thinking, oh, man, this is even difficult for me. So I was trying to think of a nice way to say that to the student, but it's, it's great to motivate us, and remind us what we're here for. And Lindsay and Tyler worked so hard on that, and I'm just enormously proud of them, I think it paid off, and I hope it's something we get to do every year. Pam Hare actually sent me a lot as well. She had a lot of firsts this quarter, or I guess last quarter, in her transitional studies classes. She mentioned that she has been able to ship a lot of her curriculum online through VITA funds, and has made it, or has done some cutting-edge online subscriptions to allow her students to access resources much easier. And it saves funds in the budget, and it's more accessible, which is excellent. And she's also taught them to access Canvas, and has integrated their Canvas progress as part of their final grades. She's also given them some experience with PowerPoint, and if I may, I actually attached some pictures, I wanted to bring them up at the computer, but with my track record with this computer, I didn't have the risk it, so I figured I would pass them around instead. And she said that, she had some comments about nuances about her students, she said that most of them attend this fair class, plus they go to work as we ship your graveyard shifts, and many leave, and so go, or many will actually go home, wake up their kids, fix dinner, and maintain the same stability in their homes. She said that one of her students had perfect attendance for every meal at the motel last quarter, well, it snowed, slinked a freezing rain, she still found a way to have perfect attendance in the hotel, which, I haven't forgotten the weather last quarter, and that really amazed me too. She said that two of her students have only a third grade education in their native country, and are still there and getting educated, which I thought was awesome. One gave up her profession as a pediatric doctor to come to the US because of a military conflict that arose in her country, and she's starting over with her profession. So she has an amazing group of students as well, and once again, I'm just extremely proud of the students we have here, they work really hard, and I, and we, the faculty, love to work hard in return to our, to show that, to show that we care. And Jim Ham also sent me some, or Jim Ham also updated me into this progress on May 14th, the huge astronomy streets, and a local friend of the cell school had an issue with 20 students outside the library inside of that over here. They said they took a lot of their pictures with cell phones through cell school, five pieces. On Friday, May 31st, he and David Mayhew and about 20 of his physics and astronomy students traveled to LIGO, that's the Laser Interferometer Gravitation Weight Observatory on the Hanford Preservation. And this was Jim's 18th field trip since 2001. And on June 15th, the math and science faculty will be hosting a step queue for our post-calculus students and various guests, the USP Lobe Park, and we're hoping to sort of do that as a morale gesture to keep morale up. Our department takes morale very seriously, and very, very, very well. Jen McCarthy also emailed me to let me know that her students in French this quarter are preparing their flashmops, sing a song on Tuesday, June 11th over in Spexo, and their song, and I apologize for my French, but I believe it's a Chiffre des Men, Chiffre des, Chiffre des Rais, by Francis Caprelle, and the students sound really great. They're currently finishing up reading and translating a novel in French. It's a story of an American high school girl from Massachusetts who spends three months going to school in Brittany, France, and her experiences there. The class liked it, and she said she believes they're feeling pretty confident about the amount of French. And they also read a chapter using a vocabulary packet that she put together, and reread and answered discussion questions, and it's going very well. She might want to thank you, the board, for your service to college. And if I may add, one thing that I was able to do recently that at least you're actually knows about, at the last year governance meeting, we looked at the results of the fall student survey, and I kind of had a light bulb moment while I was looking over it, and so I asked to save the leftover packets, and I actually took them to my statistics class, and I had my statistics class look over the data. I asked them to choose what stood out to them, and based on those things that stood out to them, we spent the day finding confidence in both students in statistics. And I also asked them what they concluded from the data from looking through it, and pointed out that you, the board, and us, the chair governments, we all make those decisions every day, and we're making decisions off that same data. I then gave my findings to Dr. Leece, and I believe it's everything I have. Thank you all.
Questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
That was very impressive to, you know, have a faculty member take something from a meeting like this and then use it as teaching. Very good. Thank you.
Okay, and we are back to exceptional faculty.
Yes, and I have two recommendations for you, and Bryce is going to tell you about each recommendation.
So as you know, we, we go through this process each year, where we actually have the opportunity to put an application request exceptional faculty awards for quite a wide variety of activities. And the faculty-led committee that is pleased to recommend two awards, one to Tyler Wallace, the amount of $2,000 for Spanish lessons and the cultural immersion in Ecuador that he has planned for this summer, and he plans to focus on math, two in Spanish. And then also recommending $615 to one of our associate faculty members in English Charlotte, to reverse the source of graduate portrait workshop this year. So our recommendation is that the board approves the second faculty award.
And you also have on page 184, a copy of the letter from the exceptional faculty awards committee, their support for this.
Any further questions or comments?
I most do approve the exceptional faculty.
Second. Would you say we approve the faculty report as presented? Any further questions? Those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay, thank you. Next item is bachelor applied science.
Yes, and Bryce, you just should have stayed up there. Remember that in our efforts to address the declining enrollments in our state full-time equivalents, one of the enrollment management process strategies that we are contemplating is the bachelor of applied science degree. And again, the reasoning was that we have students who are coming to Big Ben, they're earning their two-year associate's degree, but they're not transferring to UBS elsewhere because they are so placebound for a variety of reasons. And so we were thinking that if we aren't successful getting the four-year institutions to be able to, you know, make it worthwhile for them to come into, onto our campus and offer the kind of programs that our students are indicating that they need, that our employers are saying that would be helpful to them in providing employees with the skills and knowledge that they seek, that this would be one enrollment management approach to that would allow these students who are placebound to then continue their education toward the baccalaureate level here at Big Ben. So I know that Bryce at the April meeting had talked to you about that statement of need, and this would constitute a substantive change in the nature of our college by going from the associate degree to the baccalaureate degree. So they'd have to have approval from the state board, as well as from the Northwest Association. And so today, what we're doing is coming to you as the governing authority to support us in pursuing this enrollment strategy, management strategy, and student service strategy. So Bryce, do you have anything you want to point out to the trustees before then?
Sure. So the, the version of the statement of need document that we signed in April was about 90% complete. We had finished out some student surveys, which have that hidden in the version you have before you. There's, as of right now, I know two edits we need to make, there is a, we inverted some numbers on table, and, and then as a part of this process, we sent out a letter of intent to our primary transfer institutions, those being Central, Eastern, and WSU, and as part of the process we're going through. We have received word back from Eastern just yesterday, or the day before, and they, and we sent an email that we have the intent to offer AAS, and then that we would be interested in looking at a pathway to a master's degree for the graduates. Eastern responded that after they met with their dean of their business college, and AAS graduates from Big Ben with a 3.0 GPA would be automatically admitted into the MBA program at Eastern. They would be required to take three additional foundational courses, but that was a positive bit of feedback, and so we need to incorporate that into the statement of need before we send the statement. We, as far as the research we've done, it's, it's there, you have, and so the exception of those minor tweaks will be ready to go. And there's, there's a deadline of having that into the state board by next month. They go through a vetting process and the state board takes, it's an action item for them in October. But the next step, and then if you approve this action item, then we would include that reference in our statement.
God, there'd be no point in us going forward if the board didn't support it for obvious reasons.
Any questions? I think like the presentation was made before and to be clear, it's a Bachelor of Applied Science degree in applied management. How many other community college, or community technical colleges in State Washington have VA programs?
There are nearly all of them. So currently there are over one hundred VAS degrees offered by community colleges in the state of Washington. In May, I was in a meeting and I think I was five hundred and six, does that sound about right to me? And nearly all the community colleges are offering AASs. We're one of five or six or so in the state. Does that sound about right?
We were to have a student venue proceeding through this program to answer all the levels. And then you don't get the response that you were intending. Or when you start with twenty and a year into it, you're down to ten. What happens to those students that are in it if things didn't go as planned?
So any, any program that we have, any of our academic programs, you launch the program. And if enrollment is taking or declining, then there's a few things that the college, decisions for the college to make. So is it, is it something due to changing workforce needs? And the program is no longer relevant immediately or is it even a retool? And we're trying to do this, but we need to adjust to do something, something different. Is there some additional marketing or outreach that we need to do or not connecting with the potential population? So there's a series of questions about what we're doing. Do we have the right curriculum and are we marketing to the right population? And then make adjustments if, if we need to. And ultimately, there's also an option of shutting down a program. When you look at the, right, accreditation respected, when there's a review, then one of the things reviewers look at is what programs have you started? And then you ended over the course of our starting cycle. We have a list of degrees that we have started and degrees that we have, or certificates that we've ended. So there's always a bit of an ebb and flow there. And this would, this would be just like any other degree, we'd be asking some of those same questions. And if it's not sustainable, then shut you down.
So if a student potentially was beginning this program, their year two into it, and we decide to shut it down, what do they do?
So we, there's, we develop a teach out. And so, and so we would stop advertising, take the, the information off the website or the catalog or whatnot. But then you teach out the students, you could say, you know, you have X time to complete it. And then once you've taught it out, you're not offering, if you do students are offering more classes and you retire that course.
Thank you.
Sorry.
So on the other side of that point. The less negative side would be that if this turns out to be highly successful, we can continue to add more opportunities for students to get their VAS here, different programs.
Correct, and so with, with this particular VAS, one of the things that's interesting about it is that it's, and we talked about this a little last time, management is something that applies in a whole bunch of different disciplines. And so we can have multiple associate degrees feeding into it. And we also have the ability, if there's, if there tends to be a one sector of the economy where there's a lot of demand in particular, like manufacturing or healthcare, for instance, then we can develop the specialization for the degree to say healthcare management degree or manufacturing, what have you. And so we're, what we're looking at is sort of a general type of a degree, but we have the ability to offer specializations and then for this degree. And then of course, if there were other demands for baccalaureate prepared individuals, there's nothing, you know, not resources to show. We can sustain them.
And again, taking data that we've collected in preparation for this application to, you know, seek approval from the state board and from the accrediting association. Bryce has also used that information in the Title V grant application.
Yes, so, so we are pursuing a Title V Stansor Institution's grant. Been an interesting ride over the past several weeks because the solicitation from the Department of Ed came out and it was different than what we had anticipated. So we had to take a sharp left turn, right turn to make some adjustments. That grant is due to be submitted by the middle of July. So we have a very short timeframe to finish off the application. With that, and so with that application, a centerpiece of it is, is developing VAS and launching a VAS. And so that would be a benefit, have those outside funds to help launch the program. Rather than just some of the other questions about planning, again, if you were to look at the next steps, documents and the things that are big on our radar right now. We're looking at things related to professional development, related to equity, related to expanding our evening and online programming. We're all sort of switching and presenting the VAS. And, and also knowing we have some changes with our assessment and planning that's coming in the next two years. And so we built those, those things into our, our grant application. No guarantee we're going, going to get it, but we have worked very hard. Like we spent, spent a few hours this morning with Kathleen and Denise, looking at institution strengths and weaknesses. That's a category that we have to put into the grant application. And the planning we've done, the strategic plan, academic master plan, communication marketing, that really, as Terry alluded to earlier, that really has been informing how we have, how we're shaping this narrative so that the, so that the grant, should it be awarded, supports the implementation things that were trying to do.
This point, I believe it is an action item.
So moved to approve.
Would you say that we approved the application for Bachelor of Applied Science? Question? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, next item is the employee recognition, please.
Yes, and so each year when faculty are retiring, those who have served, is it a minimum of ten years?
Oh, wow. I want to say fifteen for faculty.
Fifteen for faculty, full time. So the Faculty Association nominates candidates who are retiring for emeritus status. And this year I received nominations from SLA for Industrial Systems Technology Instructor Bill Autry, who I believe worked here twenty-four years. Biology instructor Barbara Jacobs, who was here forty-six years and change. Business and accounting instructor Les Nitschi, who's here eighteen years. And math instructor Barbara Whitney, who was here for.
Twenty-eight years.
Twenty years.
My understanding is she was hired in nineteen ninety, so twenty-eight years probably was.
Okay, so. My recommendation is that the board approve the recommendation and award emeritus status to Bill Autry, Barbara Jacobs, Les Nitschi, and Barbara Whitney.
Can you include that on motion? So, so move, deserve a second.
Second.
Move secondly, approve the recommendations. Any further discussion?
Well, just two comments, I, I had Barbara Jacobs and Barbara Whitney, her professors when I was here. So I really appreciate their, the case. So the other thing I need to have them, a level of surface of the institution.
Yes, yes. And then as an information item, you know, each year I consider nominations, if there are any, for the Presidential Award for Meritorious Service. And these are for classified staff. They do not require action by the board, it's action by the president. And this year, I'm pleased to announce the Program Assistant Kathy Aldrich in our library. And Program Assistant Nancy Tice in our maintenance and operations, both of whom have served forty-five years. And so they're, they're getting the Presidential Award for Meritorious Service. And that'll, those will be given tomorrow? Yeah.
Part of the discussion, I'm sure, so we have a motion on the floor. My only comment was I was able to go to the recognition celebration and it was very, very nice and again, well deserved and, and everyone very appreciated. I mean, I know Barbara Whitney and Jacobs, they will be missed for sure. A little motion, no, any further discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed? Carries, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, the next, I think we need to take a Kenison break.
Five minutes, right?
And then we'll have an executive session to review the performance of a public employee and if that will. Five minutes? Thirty minutes?
Say five minutes.
Five minute break and then. At this time, we are going on to President's Evaluation. This will be in process. Anything we need to discuss at this point. That was what primarily our, our executive session is about, so we'll move on. Next item is study session. We have tentatively scheduled a study session for August.
Retreat.
Retreat, yes. I'll finalize that as a retreat and what is the topic we're going to talk about?
Oh, so at the spring ACT conference, they had two really good sessions on President's Evaluation and Board Evaluations. I think those are definitely still on our kind of cycle of improvement. So I would like to see those two items at least.
So they did, who were the presenters?
Yeah, that's an interesting issue. And Cinder Smith was the presenter and she's no longer doing, what, Syndra Smith? Is, she was the presenter, but she's no longer doing the board kind of one on ones, which is unfortunate. But I wonder if she would have a recommendation because there's been presentations by her before, she's very excellent. I, I think probably distribution of her PowerPoint slides, if you have clean copies to the board, would be a good idea. I scribbled all of mine.
We'll see if I can get those if I don't.
I think that would be a good kind of background material, just to have everyone go through those slides first.
I don't think they provided those electronically. But we can ask him if we can get them.
So that is the consensus or we need to take action to formulate that the study session will be August.
Well, I think it's scheduled already. I would make that request to the chair and our incoming chair and you guys get something.
The incoming chair? We can work together. But on the top, it should be board and President's Evaluation, okay?
Correct, yeah.
Number fourteen is trustee orientation onboarding. This project that Thomas and I have kind of been working on, we want formally adopt that. Or something we want to use as going into the future or what action we wish to take.
And. I, I, you know, after our last discussion was good, I, I think there's still some work. I know I have like one thing assigned to me that I haven't done any follow up on. So I'm not sure that it's at the point of adoption yet, but I definitely think it's a great start. So for everyone who's working on this, but.
So could we then maybe craft like our next workshop would be this and board self evaluation?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Because I think a workshop on presidential evaluation could stand by itself.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I think it'd be nice to get this trustee orientation onboarding piece to check the box and implement it if we're in fact ready to maybe. We've got to spend a little bit of time in the workshop.
Well, then also knowing that if we have changes on it, that we can make changes, like a living document where we could make changes. We can see, I mean, you have your secret. I do work from. For.
So you're talking about doing that at the board retreat or a different work session?
So I think, I think what we were talking about is in the workshop model that we've started to utilize more. We would have a workshop that would do two things. Or do you want to do it at the retreat?
Well, I'd see, I mean, at this point with the retreat, since it's divorced from the monitoring plan, I think that should be just like an intensive workshop.
Okay. I don't know if we have a full staff agenda for us ready or not. So that's the August day.
Well, so I guess that's a question, is there a current agenda for the retreat or?
No, that has not been.
Yeah, because I mean, previously we went through the monitoring reports and did the presidential evaluation, which we're doing that now.
Right.
You want a retreat?
I think the idea was that the retreat would provide you with a forum to do some reflective strategic.
No action required then?
So can I just ask one question? Because we've come back and forth. Retreat on August eighth, you want to do the board self evaluation and the trustee orientation, but not the presidency evaluation?
Well, I think we can have some conversation about process and put it maybe on the end so that if we don't get to it, then we don't get to it.
And sometime in the near future, we'll have a conversation around, you know, drafted better for, for the retreat to, to start looking at, you know, what's going to fit into that day. Um, so as far as the board evaluation of the president as an action, does that occur in September?
We have a regular board meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay, just.
October tenth is the meeting after the August meeting.
Oh, we don't have one.
Because of school starting and all that.
Oh, yeah. So just, if you're okay with it, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I'm okay.
Yeah.
That's good. Okay. Next item is number 15, board chair election. And one of the things, we do have the rotation already established. I think that's been, we're in pass, so do we need to do anything else? We don't really need to have a lot of support, because we, it's up next unless there were changes. So I don't believe we need any action, any more information.
Yeah, because there's, unless somebody needs to, yeah, that's good. Yeah, no, it's a great, it's in there.
Although trustee Richards could mess up things if she didn't re-up.
She is.
But she will.
She will. I sounded a story, did I?
When is her term up?
Right now.
October.
You haven't applied yet?
Nope. Yeah, that's what I asked.
I just asked that question recently when Terry and I had a lot of questions. And I think I'm pretty close to, and I wasn't sure, so.
Okay, so what I can help you, yes?
Since we're on that, did we, did they or did they not confirm me?
I don't think they did.
They pushed us through. I was in the first group that went, and I didn't see any action, so.
Yeah, I guess they never got around to it with everything else.
I actually remember a press statement by one of our senators about commission appointments were more important than some fiscal matters. And he was trying to shell the commission appointments.
Okay, next item, assessment of board activity. Ms. Grant.
I attended the study session of the 10th of April celebration and the ACT conference.
Also had a declaration of, 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 and regarding workforce, head building funding.
Study session in April, celebration was wonderful, has been lunch with the president.
Celebration and the study session, and also a week or so ago, attended the Job Corps meeting around the discussion about the job for being shuttered based on some actions out of DC. Going to, or Terry asked me to also touch on something else. So, and you know, we created the Othello Career Showcase a couple of years ago, and we're already in planning for year three of the Othello Career Showcase. And our goal from the beginning was to figure out a way to branch that out. And so workforce is an issue, and all of Adams County is a variety of different kinds of colleges. So we're actually pretty pleased to be able to say today that we are going to launch the Lynn Ritzville Sprague Wash Tuckna Career Showcase. And so both showcases will be held in October of this year. The LRSW showcase will be held on October 3rd, and the Othello showcase will be held on October 5th. So a college has been an active participant, Othello, I, you know, certainly as the planner for that particular college in Ritzville as well. That's a good opportunity to, you have four captive superintendents in the room versus a single superintendent. But it goes to workforce, and it's been a great opportunity to demonstrate STEM-related career fields that the college provides training and education to the Othello students. And part of that byproduct is McCain Foods, who just announced an expansion project, is launching an effort to implement its own youth apprenticeship program. That will pipeline students out of junior and senior grades at Othello High School into the plant. If they complete the tutor apprenticeship, it's like $65,000 a year starting salary.
I attended the mayor's prayer breakfast to Ms. Richards, who's the primary organizer. Very much appreciate what she did. And also listened to Mr. Poe, that gave a speech that was very outstanding. Of course, he's a speech teacher, so it should, but it was very well received, and he did a great job. Met with Dr. Lee to plan the board meeting, went to the Big Ben Retirement Celebration. Yesterday, went and visited STEM projects, and again, I highly recommend, get a chance in the future, go see it. It was very, uh, turned, toured the new building with Schoenmacher, and that was Schoenmacher shooting. And that was so impressive. And I know that there is a drone program or the...
The architect did a fly-through, and it's out on YouTube.
It is on YouTube, and I don't know what the link is, but you might send that out.
Yeah, if you send it, I've heard, I've heard that it was amazing, but the real time is even.
And then the same question.
One comment about assessing the board's activity. Couple of different positions because of your work to assist Leanne and me in soliciting funds from donors. And that's been extremely helpful. We've, we've got a gift for McCain Foods for $100,000, their fudge to the thing. So Stephen was instrumental in helping us with that. And then we anticipate next Tuesday getting Microsoft's gift for $400,000. And Thomas had played an important role in making sure that Microsoft officials saw this as a good investment. So those, not everybody's going to have that opportunity, but when you do, it, it really does show the value of the trustee place. So thank you.
Well, you saw in the McCain Foods process that, that win was driven tremendously by the HR manager.
Yes.
And, and that relates to the great work that CBIZ has done with McCain Foods previously in securing job training grants, continuing to currently prepare another job training grant. And so that, that's paying dividends. It was very little about Stephen in the room and much more about...
Well, it still helps to have a trustee, and in your case, one who's economic accounting, saying, hey, this is a great investment for economic, because I assert that workforce is economic difference all day and day now.
Next regular scheduled board meeting is really graduation. Exciting, and then the meeting on August 8th. Don't leave me needing to take any action, because that's already scheduled. Okay. Ms. Laney, Dr. Lee, do you have anything additional?
Just to echo Anna that the ACT conference was very well done with information that, try to get ahold of that PowerPoint from Cyndra. Yeah. And... Oh, June 26th and 27th, if you can be available, State Board for Community Technical Colleges will hold its meeting here at Big Ben.
Is one of those days more important than the other?
Actually, June 26th, the evening of, we'll have a meal, and we get an opportunity to do a Big Ben presentation. So, yeah.
Adams County Development Council banquet is the next day, the 27th, so.
Yeah, 27th, actually, I don't think their work is pretty much close to everybody else.
Okay, so, so 26th, the... At 15.
The presentation at Big Ben at 15, and I do need to have them here.
Okay. Anything else?
Oh, that is set.
Okay, and a little notice on Ms. Laney, so we have now listed instead of board chair, or board chair to honor, the trustees, so to make sure that if you have anything that you'd like to bring up, this is the time to do it, whether you're prepared to do it today or not. I just made a note that Terry had sent out an email regarding trustees being at different meetings and kind of guidelines for that. We've addressed that a little bit with Terry in helping people to understand the role of the trustees and what we can and cannot do, or could or could not do. And we're going to work at trying to make trustees more available to our constituents and interact appropriately. Some things we will be working on, just for your information. Anyone else have anything they'd like to bring up or discuss?
Just a 10-second commercial, the Adams County Development Council banquet is going to be in Othello on the 27th of June. And the keynote speaker is the president of WSU.
Yes. This time?